This is the monthly meeting of the Coalition for Affordable Housing Transit. This is a rare opportunity to have a forum for candidates for the County Commission in March, knowing that you're looking at five of those people will be the next County Commissioners, because there are no opposing candidates who are going to be on the ballot in November. So, we're so happy that all of you, with now just two exceptions, have come. And we will be going through, if you picked up an agenda, the questions the candidates have been received in advance are on the back. And we are very pleased to have Wib Gully as the moderator for this discussion. And so let me turn the microphone over to Wib. Thank you all for being here.
Good day. Good Monday to all of you all. Thank you. And you may need to remind me again to hold the microphone up. And I just want to say to folks in the audience, unfortunately, it's not a projection microphone for here, so I'm going to try and speak loudly, and we're going to encourage the candidates to do the same. Yep. And, but it is working for folks who are online and who are with us. And so we want to welcome folks online, as well as who are here in person. And it's a good day in Durham, and the Coalition for Affordable Housing and Transit is happy to welcome the candidates for the Durham County Board of Commissioners. Want to express really thanks on behalf of the whole Coalition for each of you all, because it's not easy to step up and run for public office, and it's not easy to serve, as you all know, but we're so grateful that you're doing that. Because Durham looks forward to a new best. And we have the candidates here, and you all are great too, because you're sitting in a pretty cramped way around this table, and we appreciate that. But it's great to have you with us. Want to go through a series of questions, a few of them at the beginning are a little bit longer, answer questions. And we're going to allow the candidates, I think, 75 seconds to speak, a minute, a quarter or so. And hopefully that will be enough to give you a chance to be concise, to indicate your thought or thoughts. And if it leads later on after the meeting and in other engagements to further questions and conversation with the community, that would be great. Of course, we'd like to do more, but we're trying to be conscious of everybody's time, particularly your all's, and only have this go for about an hour and 15 minutes. We're really fortunate that Larissa Sibley's here with us. She will be our official timekeeper, and you'll see Larissa, she's the one with the sheets to hold up when there's 15 seconds remaining, and then maybe the end, then when it says "stop." We have to be firm about this, just because we want to have all the candidates treated equally and have a chance to share their thoughts with us. So if you hear me saying thank you so much, that will be because the time is up. So with that said, we're going to start, the candidates are before you in alphabetical order. We're going to start with Ms. Alam over here on my right and your left, with As, and go through it. Each question, I'm going to move to the next person in line. So Commissioner Burns, you will go second. On the second question, you'll go first. On the third question, you all are a little bit, we should come to you, but it's okay, it's fine. You all working out, we'll come to Michelle, Ms. Burton, and then to Reverend Davis. All right. With that as our understanding, we wanted to start first with hearing a word of introduction from each of the candidates. You can say what you want in this minute and quarter, but we've suggested you could talk about how important promoting affordable housing and expanded transit is to you, and if you wanted to mention something you've done in the last few years to improve both affordable housing and transit, that's fine too. So that said, Commissioner Alam, let me start with you.
Good morning, afternoon, everyone. I'm Nida Alam. I'm the current Chair of the Durham County Board of Commissioners. Thank you so much for creating this space and opportunity for us to speak. As a Commissioner so far, I've been very dedicated to making sure that we create innovative programs here in Durham County that keeps our long-term residents able to live in Durham. And through championing, one of the programs that this group has actually been spearheading through the Tax Assistance Relief Program, getting that passed in my first budget year, and now we've actually able to expand it to provide more relief to residents across Durham, and also championing the Guaranteed Income Pilot Program, which we don't have any restrictions and limitations for the family members that are going to be recipients of this money. They can use it for their rent, their mortgage, their food. These are all things that if we can provide them, just that small, it is small, it's $750, but it's significant for certain families. So to be able to provide that and continue this type of work across Durham County in my next term.
Thank you so much. Just directly in, okay. So thank you so much. My name is Niamh Sheena Burns, not Sheema, but Sheena, so there's a little typo there. It's fine, no, it's fine. And I am currently the Vice Chair of the Durham Board of County Commissioners. And so that I can stay true to the question, you know, why is transit and affordable housing important for me? The first time that I had the opportunity to speak with you all, back in 2019 and 2020, I was very open about the fact that I had successfully navigated a foreclosure. I know what it's like to drive up to your house every day for a year and think that there's going to be a note on it, and you don't have a place to stay where you or your sick family member. So I've been really dedicated to that effort since I've been on the Durham Board of County Commissioners. These women have brought forth some great opportunities for us to help the community. One thing that me and Commissioner Alam got to work on was Low Income Tax Program, our first year, that did get passed. But we've also had the opportunity to partner with the city on over 2,000 units of affordable housing. And the thing that I'm most proud of, if I can pivot for just a little bit, is about the revolving housing trust fund. It was one of my priorities that I put forth in my second, in my third year, in my second year, my third year, we were able to bring those priorities back with the steering committee. And if you all will go back to our work session, you'll see that we're trying to move forward with a revolving housing trust fund to provide down payment assistance and gap funding for equitable developers, so that we can have naturally organic affordable housing. I also currently sit as the Chair of the Joint, of the Special Tax Board for Go Triangle, so I'm working to make sure that we can have equitable fares for all, for everyone in Triangle, so that they can get to jobs in a multimodal network that works for everyone.
If I can, I'll remain. Working. Oh, okay. All right, okay. For those, thank you so very much. I'm Frederick Davis, former pastor of First Calvary Baptist Church, 31 years now Pastor Emeritus. My experience has been with the Durham School Board from 2006 to 2014. I'm also the Chair and Founder of the West End Community Foundation Incorporated. We operate and we started the Community Family Life and Recreation Center at Lion Park. My experience and some people I see in here has been basically housing in the West End community, working with the Southwest Central Durham Housing Community Coalition, Habitat for Humanity. I do believe, as I so noted, I believe in programs that are affordable. I believe I have supported in the past initiatives to help our students have accessibility to have bus services. I think I've answered and introduced myself, but if you don't know me by now, you'll never know me.
Good afternoon, everyone. Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Michelle Burton. I am a 30-year career educator. I currently teach at Spring Valley Elementary School, where I serve as the school librarian. 21 of my years of teaching have been in Durham Public Schools. I was the former president, I am the former President of the Durham Association of Educators. I'm a leader in the North Carolina Association of Educators and the National Education Association. What made me decide to run for Durham County Commissioner is because I wanted to focus on issues, big issues, that were affecting my students' achievement and my families, and I wanted to have an impact on the policies and laws that affected my families and my students from being successful in their academic careers and in their lives in general. One of the reasons I made the decision to run was because of this issue of affordable housing in Durham County. Back in April, I had the opportunity to meet with Superintendent Katherine Truitt, and I asked my colleagues, you know, what are some of the things you want me to share with her? I didn't know if it would make a difference, but I would try. And my colleague, who's a fifth grade teacher, shared with me that she can't buy a home in Durham where she grew up. And so for me, it's important that we have affordable housing options for our educators and our families, and we have transit. So thank you so much for this opportunity.
Good morning, everybody. I am Brenda Howerton, and I serve as one of the County Commissioners, and I have served for the past 15 years. So I have a record of success. I know Durham, where Durham has been, I know where we're headed, and if we don't get transit and housing in place, I also know where we're headed with that. We have, we have worked as a, I'm the immediate past Chair of the Board of County Commissioners, and I've worked very closely with the Vice Chair, immediate Vice Chair Wendy Jacobs, and we worked on affordable housing, we worked on transit, and right now, I am the Chair of the Go Triangle Board of Transportation. And we are working hard on what are the things that we need to do at Go Triangle to make, to ensure whether people have buses more frequently, more, more buses, and all the things that will have people feel like they are being taken care of in this community. And there are three things that we're looking at: funding sources, zoning and land use, partnership and inter-local agreements, and county operations. All those things come into play when we're talking about housing affordability and transit. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, everyone. Okay, okay. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Wendy Jacobs. I've been a County Commissioner for 12 years, and I love serving in this role. Affordable housing and transit are two of my central priorities as a County Commissioner. I believe that housing is a human right, and everyone needs to have access to affordable and safe housing to thrive. And we also need transit to connect equitable transportation, to connect people to jobs, healthcare, and education. As Chair of our Board, I helped lead the effort for the county doing 300, 200, 300 units of affordable housing downtown with public-private partnerships. I've just recently championed the effort for the city and the county to contribute $6.5 million to help Housing for New Hope create our first-ever permanent supportive housing campus in Durham. And I, as Chair of our Board, I helped lead the creation of our eviction diversion and rental assistance program and our low-income homeowner relief program. As our Head of the MPO, I helped lead our new multimodal plan, and I support our Durham County Transit Plan. This is one of the reasons I'm running for reelection, to make sure we get this work done. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Dr. Mike Lee, and I am running for County Commissioner, because I want to build a Durham where everyone feels they belong, not only physically, but emotionally as well. But in order to do that, there's things we need to take care of, and a lot of my positions are going to come out through the questions, so I'll spend some other time, I'll spend this time on some other things. I believe in order for everyone to feel they belong here, they have to be able to, if they work here, they have to be able to live here. And there's some programs that we have to do that is going to come out through these questions that solidify my position, but also, I think we need to be the education county. I think we can be the shining star in North Carolina. That means funding from Pre-K, the DPS, the Durham Tech, all the way up to North Carolina Central, what we can do to create that pipeline. I also think we, in order to fund some of these affordable housing programs and affordability, I think we need to reevaluate our discretionary spending. Are they given the outcomes that we expect them to? If we have homeless, unhoused programs, if we have food programs, if they're not given the outcomes that we deserve, we should evaluate them, and then if they're not, let's go a different direction. Maybe we can save some money there. So I look forward to talking today.
Good afternoon. My name is Javonya Lewis. I am a mother of three boys in Durham Public Schools. I am an elected School Board Leader, and I'm the founding director of a nonprofit. My experience is in government with victims of domestic violence. I'm a licensed clinical mental health counselor. I've, little, okay. I am, in my counseling voice right now, feels so intimate. But I'm a licensed clinical mental health counselor. I've had a private practice and a nonprofit and opened the first franchise Smoothie King in Durham. Most people know about my fight for equity in education, access, belonging, and a conducive learning environment. The value underneath all the work that I do is to ensure that every resident can live a quality life and thrive. My priorities are affordable housing, living wage, workforce development. I have negotiated for teacher housing units and subsidies in Durham over the past year, and would like to increase those opportunities through properties such that we own as near Lowe's Grove. I've served on the Health Advisory Council, uplifted policy to support transient and safe routes to schools. As I've increased health and wellness for our students and environmentally friendly practices for our community, I will continue to do this on a Board of Durham County Commissioners. Comprehensive county development plan and transit plan go hand in hand. I look forward to telling you more about it.
So, good afternoon. My name is Steve Valentine, and I'm running for Durham County Commissioner, and I want to thank you for the invitation to be with you here this afternoon. I want to tell you a little bit about myself, because I'm new to politics, but not to public service. And so I'm a retired Army Officer with the grade of Major and Rank. I'm also a social worker and a social work educator. I'm also a lawyer. And so currently, I work at North Carolina Central University, where I head the Veterans' Law Program and supervise students in Veterans' Law. And so I also serve on the Planning Commission here in the city, the Joint City and County Planning Commission. And so I know a little something about the issue with affordable housing. And so as we hear projects that come before the Commission on a monthly basis, I get an opportunity to assess proffers that are made by private industry in developments to sort of improve the issue with affordable housing. But quite frankly, I believe as Commissioner Jacobs, that housing is a basic human right. And so I look forward to this discussion here today, and thank you again for inviting me.
Next, and really first question we want to ask you all, what specific and significant new investments in affordable housing, including emergency shelter and supportive housing?
Should the county make next year to help meet what we believe is our community's most pressing need? And Commissioner Burns, if we can start with you.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. Hard to clap over a little bit. Thank you, Councilwoman. So I am, once again, Niamh Sheena Burns, and I currently serve as the County Commissioner Vice Chair. And what specific substantial new investments to affordable housing? So I jumped on it a little bit in my first question, but I do think that we are in a really great position now as a county to start investing. We stuck our toe in the water a little bit, right? Right before I got on the Board, and even since I've been on the Board, in these really beautiful public-private partnerships, where we've seen housing go up, we work with DHIC, we work with folks in here, we work with SelfHelp. But I think in order for us to do it a little bit better, it can't just be us buying housing or just utilizing our land. We have got to put some, some skin in the game. So what we've seen in Chatham County, what we have seen in Orange, what we've seen in Wake, are these revolving housing trust funds, where individuals can pay into them, continue to pay into them at these low interest rates. That way, we can provide additional gap funding. We do have some socially responsible developers that want to build townhomes as opposed to apartments. And we all know people, there are some people who are like, "I want the American dream. I want a home. I don't want to continue to rent." So I think if we can provide that additional $2 million to somebody who's responsible, $1 million. And I also think if we can expand on that permanent supportive housing, because there is additional land within those 58 spots that we've all, I think we're going to see ourselves moving forward in the right direction to build more for folks in Durham.
Talking with friends who are more involved in community housing programs than I am, the consensus is we don't need more strategies and plans, we just need to implement smart housing development and housing that will provide shelter and hope. As a non-incumbent, that's my answer.
So as many of you all know, I'm coming from the education sphere, but looking at, you know, reading about affordable housing and how you can build affordable housing, I'm thinking that we should like partner with DPS, looking at some of the available land that DPS owns. For example, I've been saying the Lowe's Grove property, looking at the property at Northern. I know it's talking about workforce development using that building out there, maybe looking at purchasing some land in Durham County to build affordable housing. But I know it's going to require a lot of creative solutions to solve this problem in order for us to have more available units for residents to live in.
Brenda Howerton. So housing, affordable housing is a major issue, and as I stated, and as we've all stated, affordable housing, we continue to talk about it, but the things that's necessary that, you know, I'll go back a little bit. The county wasn't involved in affordable housing until a couple of years ago, and as being a, being on the Board, we took on affordable housing, the 300 and the 500 East Main Street, that we took that on. And what we have found is that we've got land, the city, the county, and the school, and we have to be able to use those land. And if I look at the national toolkit that's being created by the National Association of Counties, they talk about the things that I mentioned a while ago about affordability, about funding sources, about zoning and land use, about partnership in inter-local agreements and county operations. It's partnership and collaboration, partnership and collaboration if we're to get this done. Thank you.
I'm Wendy Jacobs, currently serving as your County Commissioner. I think there are a lot of things that we can and must do in the coming year. One of the most important things is we need a comprehensive housing plan. We do not have one. Other neighboring counties do, and we need to be leveraging all the tools and strategies that we have. Most immediately, we, the county, can contribute half a million dollars to an affordable housing revolving loan fund to help finance affordable housing. We also need to, we need to fulfill our rental assistance program, which is now out of money. We need to keep supporting the Carver Creek Permanent Supportive Housing Campus. We need to create a day center for our urban ministries. We do not have a day center for unhoused people. This is a critical need. We need transitional housing for specifically women who are just as involved. That is a gap. And also, we need to keep partnering with the city. We just spent $2.75 million of ARPA funds to create 600 units of affordable housing. These are all things that I believe we can get done and get moving on in the next year, and that I will support as your County Commissioner. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Again, my name is Dr. Mike Lee, and I served on the School Board for eight years. Four of those years, I was Chair. I was Vice Chair for two. And during that time when I was Chair, we, we worked to get teacher housing. And I was at the Lowe's Grove site, like Michelle said, and now that Northern has had a new location, we could do something there. Regulations are different from schools versus residential locations. And so part of the building that we have up at Northern, we should be able to work with the school system to renovate that, to make some sort of affordable housing there, just like we did with Whittit School. If you all remember, we transformed that building, used to be the hillside, to Whittit School. Now it's a, it's a partial residential and a school there. We can do that, you know, just like we did there up in Northern. That's something we could do immediately. But we need to partner with programs like CASA, like we did back when we did, when we were working on the teacher housing. We need to partner with them to identify locations that we can build these places for affordable housing. I really like the Main Street buildings themselves, but also the Carver Creek program that was been alluded to. We can find other places around where tax credits are expiring. We could partner with the city and build other programs throughout the county itself to, in order to attack affordable housing directly.
I am Javonya Lewis, and the county has not traditionally gotten involved with affordable housing, and I'm so appreciative of the creative ways that they have used public, public-private partnerships to have the development on the 300 and 500 block. However, we know that this is a need desperate that is continual. In January, we already had 1,000 unhoused youth. We know that housing is critical for our families and our workforce development. As we're looking for affordable housing, I will advocate for continued affordable housing opportunities with private, public partnerships for our teaching workforce, but also for EMS workers, our county workers who cannot afford to live in the city that they work in, in beloved city. Supportive housing community is another thing that we need to support. Similar to what we have supported with, in the schools for community schools, which is wraparound services, supportive housing communities will also support those who are getting into housing, but knowing that it's multi-systemic issues that people are having around income, food insecurity, and housing. With supportive housing, we can support our refugee community as well, and then daily shelters is another need for those who are unhoused, to have someplace to go and be sheltered through the day. Thank you.
Thank you for the question. My name is Steve Valentine again, and I think that affordable housing, with the issue of affordable housing, will be the number one issue that we face here in the county in the coming years. And I've had an opportunity through my work with veterans to sort of see this issue through a different lens, but veteran population is a microcosm of the larger community. And so the issue of housing, and particularly food insecurity in that particular population, is something that I'm concerned with on a daily basis. And several of my, the people on the panel here today, some elected officials, some not, have talked about the private and public partnerships, and they, they are, they are working, right? There are some efforts being made. But quite frankly, I think that we have this conversation around affordability. We need to be more honest about the discussion that we're having. Who is it affordable for? And ultimately, I believe the solution is, as a nation, is getting our state and our federal government back in the business of public housing and helping us with these efforts around the county.
Good. And speak up too.
Hello again. I'm Nida Alam, Chair of the County Commission, current Chair. And I want to say, start off first by saying ditto to everything that has been said. I think everyone is on the same page as this. All of us value the investment in affordable housing. I want to emphasize what Stephen was just saying at the last point about what is affordable. And I think that's going to be a really important emphasis that this next Board, this next City Council and School Board is reevaluating, how do we define affordable? If we're talking about 60% AMI, 30% AMI, because our residents that are living in public housing, affordable housing is not affordable to them. And so if we're talking about how do we provide homeownership or full-time rental properties to our most vulnerable communities, we need to make sure that we're having these public-private partnerships, because we all know the elephant in the room, that the state legislature blocks us from being able to develop and require development from, affordable housing development from private developers. So that's why we work with these private, public-private partnerships to bring it ourselves, because that's really the only way we're going to get around the General Assembly, is if we start looking at the land, the city, the county, the schools all own, and saying that we want to invest in our communities directly. We want to make sure that, you know, if we, the county with the 300, 500 East Main Street project, we are the landlords, so we can determine what the rent is, so we can make sure and require ourselves to have it affordable.
We appreciate all of that. Two quick points that you all are well aware of. A lot of the recent studies in recent years have showed the most effective anti-poverty program that happens is where you start with providing shelter, safe and affordable shelter, and that goes longer than anything in terms of trying to meet poverty. And that's why the Coalition's worked on this, and the Coalition agrees with you all. Affordable housing is not one thing, right? It's multifaceted and a very challenging issue. We appreciate all those thoughts. This next question, again, is a little bit longer one, a full 75 seconds. Do you agree to support the County Assessor's Office with additional capacity, both staff and resources, to more accurately assess larger, more complex commercial developments? A special focus there would be on luxury apartment buildings and the RTP. A lot of the recent studies in recent years have showed the most effective anti-poverty program that happens is where you start with providing shelter, safe and affordable shelter. And that goes longer than anything in terms of trying to meet poverty. And that's why the coalition's worked on this and the coalition agrees with you all. Affordable housing is not one thing, right? It's, it's multifaceted and a very challenging issue. We appreciate all those thoughts. This next question, again, is a little bit longer one, uh, a full seventy-five seconds. Do you agree to support the county assessor's office with additional capacity, both staff and resources, to more accurately assess larger, more complex commercial developments? A special focus there would be on luxury apartment buildings and the RTP lab and research space. Because as you know, recent studies have shown that the appraisals there don't match market value for those properties. And a conservative estimate is there could be thirty-five million dollars a year or more that is available uh, to the county uh, if those things were properly assessed, uh, and they weren't outgunned by a lot of uh, high-powered lawyers who come in on behalf of the uh, folks who are doing that. And I think Reverend Davis, can we start with you, sir?
I believe in evaluating staffing needs based on appropriate research. As a non-incumbent candidate, I can only answer with, as present administration calls for additional staff, then it must be validated. So if there's a need, it must be validated. Again, as a board member, we should not focus on micromanaging.
Um, Michelle Burton, um, yes, I totally will support more staff in the county tax assessor's office. One of the things that I had the pleasure of doing as a kid was going around with my father, looking at properties in Chicago. He worked for a real estate development corporation. And they had a big staff where they had to look at properties and assess values and things like that. And it was a lot of work. And I know that to really fully evaluate the value of commercial properties, it takes a lot of work. And I'm so grateful for having that experience because I can totally understand if there's not enough people. You know, it's a public entity and, you know, you don't have the lawyers, the staff to really fully do that work, right? So I think we need to give the county tax assessor's office as much staff as possible. So we're making sure we're getting the tax dollars that are due Durham County.
Brenda Howerton, currently serving as commissioner. Uh, and the answer is yes. And one of the things that we just, um, we have a new county assessor. He's not new to county, but he's new in the role. And we need support for him and his department. And we are short on staff. I mean, it's just all over the country. This is not just to Durham, but we're short on staff all over. So if anybody's listened to that, to this and interested in applying, apply on. We, we welcome you. Thank you.
Uh, I'm Wendy Jacobs, county commissioner, and um, absolutely, um, I would support whatever resources. Uh, Mr. Kier Doyle, our new tax administrator assessor needs. I actually spoke to him this morning and went over all of the questions that you all um, had raised about this issue and also the Hudson Bond study. And one of his responses was that a lot of the issues that are reflected in the study are because we have not done a tax reevaluation since two thousand nineteen. And we are desperately overdue. Uh, we were, we had planned to be on a four-year schedule, but because of the malware attack, because of COVID and also converting to a new software, we were behind. And honestly, I pushed that uh, our, the plan was to wait until twenty twenty-six. And I really pushed that we did it in twenty twenty-five, but six years is too long to go. And because we are losing out on the values that were identified in the study. And um, so I think that we will see some of these issues addressed um, when we do the revow. And frankly, one of the reasons I am running for reelection is because I've been through two rebows and it's really important to have some experience there. This is going to be a critical issue for our community and we want to do it with an equity lens, so it's fair to Durham residents. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Dr. Mike Lee. Um, I do agree with um, adding additional capacity and staff and resources. Um, I think businesses have to understand, uh, and builders have to understand that taxes are your subscription cost of doing business and being here in Durham. I work in software as a service. I've been in business for twenty-seven years. I work at Avalara's right up the street here. And um, I lead a group of customer success managers. And what we do is make sure that our customers are getting the value for the subscription cost that they pay. But just like any subscription cost, Netflix or whatever it is that you pay for, if you don't pay each particular time your bill is due, you don't have access to it. I think that we as a county have to remind businesses that taxes are uh, are that subscription. And you, you should be paying your fair share uh, here to contribute to Durham in order to do business in Durham. I think there's a fine line, a balance that we have to, to walk there. But I do think we have to make sure that businesses understand, you know, if you want to continue to be here, you want to continue to prosper here in Durham, you have to pay your subscription to be here.
My name is Jevanya Lewis, and um, like Mr. Davis said, we have to trust the research and there is a need there. And as there is a shortage in so many different departments and staffing, we have to prioritize those that will support increased revenue in the city and the county. Uh, as you mentioned, thirty-five million plus funding uh, for not having these evaluations of what businesses should play, should pay. I agree with everything what Mr. Lee said about the cost of doing business in Durham. And those things that, that thirty-five million will support, um, are services like the heart program, expanding that throughout the county. Programs like early childhood and education and making sure that we're getting to a place of having affordable uh, childcare for our students. You all know my background is mental health and as a licensed clinician, really want to make sure I'm giving oversight to our juvenile justice detention centers and our jails. So again, we need the revenue to get in to support the programs that we're, that we have here in Durham. And uh, this evaluation is overdue and if there are, and as there are more physicians needed, we need to do what we can to uh, prioritize that for our revenue and for our programs. Thank you.
Yes, so thank you for the question. Uh, my name is Steve Valentine. And so based on what I'm hearing from the incumbents, I, I would agree that uh, well, I would agree to support the county assessor with additional capacity with regards to staffing and resources. But I think there's an additional uh, lens that we should probably consider. And so I've been talking to uh, residents around the county. And I've been talking about um, discussing with our corporate partners who have tax exemption status, particularly institutions. And some people have noted that this was a radical idea. But if you look at other municipalities around the country, uh, in Philadelphia, in New Haven, in New Jersey, um, they're asking places like the University of Pennsylvania, Yale and Princeton to consider adding to the tax base in those municipalities. And guess what, ladies and gentlemen, they've answered the call. And so I think we can start that same conversation right here in Durham County.
Thank you for mentioning that. All right, Commissioner Alom.
Thank you. Again, Commissioner Alom, uh, current member of the Board of County Commissioners. I absolutely support providing uh, Mr. Doyle with more resources. Our board actually supported him in, well, our previous tax administrator in the effort to move towards a new uh, tax administration system and technology because it was so outdated. And we need to get on a new system, not just for our tax uh, evaluation, uh, our tax staff, but also for residents to be able to go and look up what their property taxes, be able to have an actual user-friendly service. Um, and I think it's only me also important, as Wendy mentioned, we have the tax reevaluation coming up in twenty twenty-five. Folks are going to be hit with sticker shock. Um, like I live in southeast Durham where it was the area that was very affordable for me and my husband to first buy our first home. It is absolutely not affordable anymore. Our neighbors are selling their homes for two, three times the prices that we bought it for in just six, seven years. Um, so people are going to be hit with that sticker shock of that market. And we need to make sure we have staff that are ready to go out into the community to explain people's property taxes bills to them, explain what these changes mean and also expanding. Uh, I want to make sure that we have the proper reevaluation of all these high-end property taxes because, yes, we can generate more revenue, but we can also look at, because we unfortunately have to tax at a flat rate for everyone uh, at properties levels. But we can ease the burden on our residents um, by making sure that all of our high-end properties are taxed properly. And um, also agree with, with Stephen Valentine's very vague description, but I support it.
It's okay. It's okay. Uh, Commissioner Burns here again. I'm also really passionate about this issue. Um, and I want you all to know that the county is primed and ready for this issue. I know it might not seem to some, but I promise you that we are. In hiring tax administrator Doyle, that was an intricate part of his uh, employment evaluation. He is born and bred Durham. He knows what it's like to look and see his aunt's house or his uncle's house be uh, under valued. So we made that, equity was a huge portion of uh, why we hired him. And also in the training of like Dwayne Brenton and his staff. There's a reason why this board made sure to bring in somebody from the school of government to talk about how reappraisals uh, did have a racist sentiment to them. There's a reason why we had the Durham Regional um, Association of Realtors to bring in their assessors to say, are we going to be more equitable even on the private side about how we look at properties? The other thing that we did, the first thing I asked Mr. Doyle when he got hired, I said, do you have enough people? Do you have enough people? And we do have our temporary staff throughout the year, but as our former chair, uh, Howerton said, we are looking for workers. And I would also agree with the sentiments. We didn't get to do an appraisal in twenty nineteen, which is why we did get a chance to move it up. I asked the question, are we ready for twenty twenty-five? And the staffing issue came up. Commissioner uh, Jacobs is right. We did uh, move it back a year. So we are trying to get ourselves ready so that we can capture that thirty-five million in an equitable way so that we can provide more services to the people in this room.
No, you're fine. You're fine, Commissioner. Uh, yes, um, uh, thanks to you all. Uh, on that, we have one more uh, question for longer responses. Uh, and then uh, several questions that we hope that will be shorter. But this one's an important one for all of us. Um, do you support regional rail service? And by that, we don't mean commuter rail focusing on weekdays nine to five, but, but a real regional rail service, seven days a week and hours that serve people in the future of Durham transit. Specifically, what steps should the county take in the next year or two to start ensuring that all Durham residents have affordable and sustainable access to jobs and opportunities throughout the region? And Ms. Burton, can we?
Um, Michelle Burton, and yes, um, I like commuter rail. Um, I know if I keep referencing back to my home city of Chicago, um, it's because that, you know, Durham is not a small place anymore. When I first came here in nineteen ninety-two, it's a mid-sized city about to become an even larger city. And so commuter rail is really good because I took commuter rail a lot growing up. My father did, my mother did, going from the south suburbs all the way to downtown Chicago. It's great for connectivity, uh, for people to get to places easier. Um, but as from what I know is that the federal government's not giving any more money. Um, or I'm not sure. I know about Bus Rapid Transit, um, that they're funding Bus Rapid Transit. I think that if it's possible for us to invest in commuter rail, we should do it. Um, I'm looking forward to learning more about how we can do it because I think it will be best for residents um, to get to places easier. Um, and also it'll help people to get to their jobs and, and all over the triangle. So I'm very open to it.
Thank you, Brenda Howerton. And I am the new Go Triangle Board of Trustees uh, Chair. And there's a lot going on and we won't have time to talk about all of it today. But what I do want to say is that, you know, we are looking at more buses, some more frequency of buses with Go Triangle to ensure that all of our residents can get to the jobs and take advantage of the, the corridor, the research triangle corridor. There's going to be a lot of jobs out there and people have got to be able to get to these jobs. So Go Triangle's looking at those, um, as far as um, uh, the rail, we need money. We need the federal dollars. And one of the things that I've taken upon myself is we are hiring a lobbyist to work with our federal folks to get more dollars because Raleigh is knocking it out of the court, y'all. I mean, they, there's no shortage of dollars. For Durham, there is. And we need somebody that can bring those dollars into Durham. And that's one of the things that I'm working on with Go Triangle. Thank you so much.
I'm Wendy Jacobs, county commissioner. Um, this is a huge priority for me. We see the numbers. People like riding trains. Train uh, usage is up in North Carolina. And we need to have daily hourly service for pass. Okay. We need to have daily hourly service uh, for folks in Durham. And the, the, what we know is that the jobs of the future are actually east of Durham in Wake County. And so we have to be able to get our residents into good-paying jobs. I am a member of our regional rail committee. We just started a study, funding a study between um, our MPO and Wake County to actually figure out how do we implement this, take advantage of federal money that is there right now for rail. And I helped advocate for us to apply for a grant where, which we got, which is studying grade crossings right now in East Durham. I also pushed for us to be designated as a corridor. Uh, we got rail, half a million dollars to study our corridor from Charlotte to DC. And Durham is right in the center of that. We're also working on a new multimodal hub at RTP, which is going to be huge and connect people to the airport and connect buses and trains and bikes. So these are all things I'm working on and I will continue pushing forward as a county commissioner.
Uh, Dr. Mike Lee here. Um, I do support, you know, uh, an all-inclusive, you know, with the, with the regional rail, rail, including the commuter rail. Uh, I do think we have to do that. I think the county commissioners have to develop a plan with the other partners around to how we, how we actually make that happen. And while we're doing that in parallel, I think we should take advantage of our current infrastructure. And what can we do to uh, increase our transit, transit capacity? And that could be bus rapid transit. You know, we already have streets. We already have highways. How can we enhance those to create those, you know, the bus priority lanes, um, the traffic light signaling, all those sorts of things that gives buses that uh, that rapid transit, the, the priority on the infrastructure we already have? That can include bike lanes as well. I heard of a project of, you know, a bike path up forty, you know, so people can ride, you know, their bikes to work into RTP, into Durham and so forth. So I think we can, while we're working on the train, the, the train, the regional rail and the commuter rail, I think that we can use our existing infrastructure that we have now to make more immediate changes for our transportation.
I am Jevanya Lewis. And uh, so gone are the times of having one job for thirty years or living in one house for thirty years. Never have been the times of only having jobs for nine to five. I've worked jobs at many hours as a student and from, I worked in uh, at uh, doing taxes input and I worked from eleven PM to four AM. So we need services beyond just the nine to five that is listed here. Um, we need flexibility, knowing that there's flexibility with housing, with uh, working remotely opportunities and even social opportunities that is really important that we're looking at a holistic, multimodal transient system that supports the needs. And even our youth, again, that's a perspective that I'm going to continue to bring. It's about our youth. I grew up in Germany and I had rail systems that were easily accessible. And how do we keep children involved and engage in different programs and activities? That has to be an option for them as well. Some of the ways that we can do this is we need to enhance and expand the regional connections, as Dr. Lee was saying. We need to decrease our wait times with more frequent routes. We need to increase access to safe bus stops um, that are not in the woods. And we need to work with the city to continue to offer free fares after July when federal funding runs out. Thank you.
Yeah, so thank you again for the question. My name is Steve Valentine again. And let me just say that I agree unequivocally with the notion that uh, we need rail service. And so quite frankly, uh, the future started yesterday with regards to rail service. And so Durham is way behind in that disregard. And so piggyback on my colleague's uh, commentary about Germany. I have served in the military and been in uh, several countries around the world. Um, it's amazing. So in some Asian countries, I mean, children are more uh, uh, able and adept at uh, negotiating their trains um, to negotiate the communities in which they live to, to receive, receive services, to, to go to school, um, even unescorted by parents at a very uh, young age. And so um, to the extent that the issue is one of funding, I mean, that's one that we're definitely going to have to address. And I agree with uh, Mr. Lee, excuse me, Dr. Lee, on the, the, the issue of having a plan. And so I think we need to start planning, but know that uh, rail service is the future of Durham. And so we need to, to, to grab that.
And I apologize to the candidates about having to interrupt. And I apologize to the candidates about having to introduce yourself each time and speak up. We'll work on technology, so maybe in four years that'll be better.
Thank you. Nida Alum, County Commissioner again. Um, absolutely agree with everything that's been said. We need a multimodal, uh, transit system. We need investment in rail, uh, beyond just the nine to five commuter rail, uh, projects. And, you know, me backing off of Javanya and Stephen, like my freshman year of undergrad, uh, my family had to move to Malaysia for my dad's work. And we spent that entire year that we were there, never purchased a car because we were able to get around through the public transportation systems. And it's kind of interesting to think that, you know, the most developed nation in the world, the most well-resourced nation in the world, we don't even have the systems like that, that exist, uh, in other countries. So being able to invest in a transit system where we aren't so car dependent, you know, out in Southeast Durham, again, the closest bus stop, uh, to me is a three-mile walk without any access to sidewalks. I'd have to walk on 98 without any sidewalks on highway to get to the bus stop and it's just not feasible. Um, so especially looking at that area where there's so much new development, where it's one-lane roads on 98, on Sharon Road, on Olive Branch Road. We don't have the infrastructure to support this level of growth that we're having, um, when it comes to transit. And we have to also take into consideration the 70 corridor. What is that going to be looking like? And we need to have a multimodal system ready for 70, um, to ease that congestion. Cause when we invest in transit, we're investing in people having access to jobs and education.
Commissioner Vice Chair Burns here again. I agree with everything that my colleagues did say, but I want to throw out there just a couple of things. You know, we can walk and chew gum at the same time here in Durham. What did the city just get? $4.8 million for our battery charging stations. What are we seeing with Bus Rapid Transit in Raleigh? We're seeing natural gas buses. I got on one, I was amazed. So we're, when we hook up our network to it, we're probably going to do something similar. I talked to our, um, Transportation Director and that's what we're trying to do here. That's why we're running a study for what our Bus Rapid Transit looks like. That's why we're currently, I remember I told Ellen Beckman, I said, go get as much money as you possibly can. She came back and next meeting, she said, you know what I did? And we got this money to look at the rail in East Durham. And so we, please know that we encourage our staff to go after these dollars. But $700 million, it sounds like a lot of money, right? But it really seriously isn't when you think about supply chain issues, when you think about labor. So that's why, like my colleagues, we have got to talk to our neighbors. I currently sit as the Chair of the Special Tax Board for Go Triangle. And a lot of the rates that we currently charge have not been indexed for inflation. Like they haven't changed since 1989. I think we're in a position, do we take some of these fees from five to $12? No, but there's an argument to be made for, uh, seven so that we can braid this funding, pay for what we need to, get additional bike lanes, pay for, um, our, um, and I'm going to stop right here because the wrist is ready. Please go to our website and comment on our work, 2025 Transit Work Program. You have until Wednesday, the 21st. Please share some of your thoughts and let us know how you feel.
Frederick Davis, I support any and all services that will guarantee economic success for all people. I once again think we are relying too much on people outside of Durham to determine our welfare.
Thank you again to all the candidates. Um, and we start now with shorter answer questions, uh, what I like to call the lightning round. Uh, and so the hope here is that the question is phrased such that you all would be able to say yes or no. If you wanted to add one sentence to that, sure, that's fine. Uh, and it's going to really tax our timekeeper who has to keep people on 15 sec. 15? Yes, ma'am. And, uh, um, and that is so that we can try and get through this and have a chance if folks in our audience maybe have a, a question, uh, we could get one or two of those. So that said, this question, do you support making more county property available for construction, affordable housing wherever possible? For example, county-owned properties that may be vacant? And as Durham's downtown goes vertical, perhaps county-owned properties that are one-story or two-story that could be, uh, done in a public-private partnership to go up higher and with the county offices staying right at that same location? So that's the question. Do you support making more county property available, uh, for affordable housing where possible? Now, I think Commissioner Howerton, I need to start with you. Is that right?
Brenda Howerton, serving as County Commissioner. Brenda Howerton, served as County Commissioner. And the answer to the question is yes, absolutely. We've been working on those things already and we will continue to work on them as your County Commissioner.
Wendy Jacobs, County Commissioner. Absolutely, we're already doing it. To me, any surface parking lot is future housing. And we also need to look at city, county, Durham Public Schools land, like DSA property downtown, Lowe's Grove and Northern High School. And anything that is near a transit area needs to be prioritized for affordable housing.
Uh, Dr. Mike Lee here. Uh, yes, I do support this. Uh, for example, Carver Creek, do more of those. Uh, teacher housing, Lowe's Grove and Old Northern Site.
Javanya Lewis here. Yes, I do support it. We need to stop and listen. We need to make sure that affordable housing is affordable for whom, um, leverage and get the full infrastructure plan in place as well as a comprehensive plan that includes both housing and infrastructure needs at the same time, 15-minute communities.
Yes. So my name again is Steve Valentine. It's a very easy question for me. I'm going to say yes.
Nida, Nida Alum, Chair of the County Commission. Absolutely, yes. And as Wendy mentioned, also bringing in the city and the schools to assess all of the property and also looking at property that's available for sale, um, and seeing how we can secure that and purchase it ourselves.
Now, Commissioner Burns, Vice Chair of the County Commission. Absolutely, unequivocally, yes. We've been making purchases also when we see something, we, it's not just see something, say something. This is a board of women. When we see something, we buy it. There's no different than on 15501 MLK, we bought the last intersection of Hayti. We're looking at a plan to figure out what we can do. We just bought some land for a farm campus and I'm going to pass it on now.
My answer is yes, at the advisement of a friend at the Lakewood YMCA named Bo. He said we should be using county property for the good of all people.
Michelle Burton, yes, because when I look at that land, the old Lowe's Grove land, I'm like, we need to do something with it and it would be a great piece of land to build teacher housing, public servant housing for Durham County residents.
Thank you all. We appreciate that answer. Moving on to the next question. It said, the question is, the county with city approval eliminated property taxes for senior homeowners with extremely low income, under 30% AMI, in last year's, uh, low-income housing relief programs. So senior homeowners with extremely low income. The question, should the county and city eliminate property taxes for all homeowners, not just seniors who are extreme, who have extremely low income, below 30% AMI?
Wendy Jacobs, County Commissioner qualifier. We are not allowed to eliminate taxes in the state of North Carolina. We have a grant program that is, uh, for a welfare program. It is administered through our Department of Social Services. But yes, I would love to explore other options. We're exploring our grant program.
Doc, Dr. Mike Lee, um, I do support whatever we can do to help, help with, now that Ms. Jacobs said that we couldn't do that, I do support, I do support reduction of taxes based on the age of a dwelling or the, or the age of the original owner of the dwelling.
Thank you all. The question, I just read it wrong, but it says right here, should we extend the grant program? No, I know, I know. I'm, I'm trying to be almost as witty as you are. Should we extend the grant program to go beyond just seniors to all low-income?
So I believe in the balance and appreciate the support for our seniors. I feel like there's always, um, we can't always look at the, the blanket approach for the work that's being done. I would want to look at capping property taxes for long-time residents as another option for those low-income, um, property owners. Um, also work on initiatives to decrease the wealth gap and increase income opportunities.
Yes. Steve Valentine again. And, uh, I would need to research this, this issue. I'm just going to be honest. I'd need, I would need to research, uh, this issue to come up with, uh, you know, what's good for the entire county? Now, I would like to say that I would want to do that, but clearly I would need some more research in this area before I made a decision. But I'm always committed to making decisions that are good for people.
Nida Alum, Chair of the County Commission. I would absolutely support expanding this grant program that we have at the county. And also as a member of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners and you at-large Board of Directors member, I would advocate also, uh, at the state level for us to be able to pass legislation to allow us to have progressive property taxing here in Durham County, but across the state.
County Commissioner Burns, I also will not be breaking our clean tax system law and would of course expand us wanting to, uh, to move forward with additional funding in this grant and expand it for more folks. But I also want to be very key. We spent $65 million in rental assistance. We've spent about $750,000 a year in this program. We also have to make sure we're getting people back to work because we can't pay our way out of this. So I hope as we expand this, we're also expanding wraparound services, support, job opportunities and workforce development, so the individuals will have the opportunity to do this on their own also. We can, again, walk and chew gum at the same time.
Yes, and even if I'm a senior.
Michelle Burton, I'm going to have to piggyback on what, um, Mr. Valentine said and research more about this. I know in very progressive cities, um, they have these kinds of programs, but they have legislators or legislatures that are more friendlier towards these, um, laws and making sure that municipalities have home rule. And unfortunately, we don't have home rule in North Carolina. But I'm also a big proponent about increasing people's wages. I'm a big, I'm a big labor person and we have to also focus on making sure that we're paying people livable wages.
Okay. I'm Brenda Howerton, County Commissioner, and I agree, I agree wholeheartedly that, um, with the grant program, increasing it. And I am also on the Board of Directors for the State Association of Counties and have been for years and been the president of that organization. And the one thing that is, I've known to be successful is when you can galvanize 100 counties to push the legislature to make something happen, that's what you call power. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, one more question, quick answers. It, uh, it builds on what we've learned about city and county-funded grant programs, but the focus on this is folks who are, in view of the increasing cost burden of rent, focuses on folks, uh, that having a grant program to offset housing costs for extremely low-income households, again, below 30% AMI, who are severely cost burdened, that is, they're paying more than half their income just on housing. Um, and so would you support a, uh, city-county, uh, grant program to help folks who are severely cost burdened by their rental costs?
Dr. Mike Lee here. Uh, yes, I do support this type of program. I also support expanding a guaranteed income program that we have to help with this particular cost. But also this, this goes right along with my platform is if you work in Durham, you should be able to live in Durham.
Uh, yes. We have to support our lowest wage workers and the lowest income housing needs as well. Um, and the last thing I'd say, we want to make sure we're stopping evictions and that wrenches are knowing the rise to, want to make sure we're increasing, um, support around those programs as well.
So I don't think I have anything to add from the two who've already spoken. I, I, I agree ultimately and I support the guaranteed income program, um, that's already underway. And, uh, to the extent that, uh, the county can play a part, I would definitely support it.
Nida Alum, Chair of the County Commission again. Um, absolutely, I would support expanding these types of grant programs and, uh, piggybacking of what Commissioner Burns said earlier, that we have, we already have rental assistance programs and there's going to be a cliff, uh, that people fall off of when those, that funding ends. So we need to make sure that we're investing in it in a way that it's a short-term program so folks can get up on their feet by providing access to jobs so that they're not dependent long-term on these type of grants.
I would also, now, Commissioner Burns, County Commissioner, I would like to say yes. I mean, so it's unequivocal, yes, but as somebody who sat up here during COVID, I helped run $1.3 billion rental assistance program. When that funding ran out, uh, and we lost the moratorium on evictions, we still saw some movement. What I would encourage folks in here to do and what I would say, same way with the Housing Coalition that we have, our Housing Coalition, they told us as soon as that two years of rapid rehousing funding runs out, people drop out of the program. We have got to provide people with support, job training and wraparound services. That way, when those time limits end, they can go out there and we can also be in a better position to help somebody else. So it's a yes, but we have to provide support.
As Frederick Davis again, yes, and I even support greater support for those who are in the category of no wealth.
Michelle Burton, that I'm going to say yes, but I'm also going to say let's pay people livable wages and let's fight for livable wages in Durham County.
So I also say yes, and, uh, guaranteed income programs are great. And one of the things that we have is that we have the universities that will give us data to let us know how our programs are working and we're looking at, and be, I would be happy to support another guaranteed income. And I also support paying people a living wage. And one other thing, if I take a moment, uh, the, um, Hayti Reborn, um, movement is a program that helps individuals in this community get jobs and go through Durham Tech so that they can get homes without having to, to not have anywhere to live or persuade somebody else to live with them.
Wendy Jacobs, County Commissioner, um, absolutely. Are, we know that our most cost burdened residents in Durham are renters. So this is something that we have to figure out the best way to address. We also need a holistic approach, which is funding things like legal aid. We have to look at, again, other services that can support people, make sure that they are getting them when they're eligible, including our veterans and our seniors. And we also have to look at, um, expanding things like our guaranteed income pilot.
Thank you so much. Uh, last question here, uh, is back in the area of transit. Um, and it's asked the question, do you support expenditure of county funds for sidewalk construction and maintenance to improve access to bus stops and connections to schools and, uh, business centers and parks for construction and maintenance of trails and walking and bike paths along, uh, the, uh, the parts of the county, uh, that may not be reached by the city's investments in these things, rural roads, other designated corridors? Um, do you support the county playing a role there in funding in, uh, that infrastructure?
Yes, we have to be good partners. Where the city takes care of the infrastructure, the county takes care of the heart of the people. And there are so many different intersectionalities for this work and this is one of those intersectionalities. I want to make sure we're prioritizing community voice. I've also have passed policy on a school board for redistricting at the school level for walkability and bike trails. And that's important that the county is also playing a role in that as well. We need to consider our ADA needs and access to trails. We want to make sure that the county is prioritizing those who are disabled and need maintenance of those trails, wheelchairs on playgrounds. I'm sorry, I've run out of time. Yes.
So again, thank you for the question, Steve Valentine. And so, yes, I believe, uh, as my colleague has stated, that we should be good partners. And so the infrastructure is largely a function of, of the city, uh, but to the extent that the county can help with improvements. Uh, I am extremely surprised by the number of communities that don't have sidewalks in 2024. And so to the extent the county can help fill some of those gaps and connect all of our communities seamlessly, uh, that's something that I support.
Nida Alum, Chair of the County Commission. I would support this. I think it's also important to recognize I think it's also important to recognize, though, that the transit tax that the county has is for larger scale projects. And we want to make sure that we don't dip into those funds so significantly that we're not able to invest in a passenger rail program, we're not able to invest in bus rapid transit because that's really the long term strategy. Taxes created, but I'm supportive. I've talked to council members who actually want to implement, I get it, Larissa, want to implement an infrastructure bond that would be investment in our sidewalks.
Now, Commissioner Burns, Vice Chair of the County Commission, I agree with my colleague. Yes, I'm in full support of it. Talked to Ellen Beckman, we do have 40, I think 40 sidewalks that were really improved in bus stations, bus stops this year, 50 next year and 75 the year after that. So we do have a plan, but I also want to encourage people to advocate for your neighborhoods because they are going in certain, I'm so proud that my neighbors now have one because we didn't have one. And no, I didn't do it as a county commissioner, but we're in, we're in the loop. I would just like to say, along with my colleague, really talking about how we do a transit infrastructure bond in the coming years. That way, we don't dip into that money that we're going to use for bus rapid transit.
Frederick Davis, my answer is yes, Lord, yes. However, there are biking lanes still today. I question what mind developed these bike patterns?
Michelle Burton, I say yes. While I served as president of DAE, we were talking about at Southern High School, the students were like, like, couldn't understand why they didn't have sidewalks. And we were trying to figure out, okay, how do we get sidewalks out there? Because many of the students walk from Southern to their homes. So definitely working with the city to figure out how we can make it happen.
Okay, yes, yes, and yes, you know, working with Go Triangle. The, one of the mission is to rebuild the bus stops and to continue for, you know, 75, 75 next year, continue to build the next year, just keep on building so that everybody has what they need. And I think about Hillside. Citizens have been fussing about a bus stop over there for years, sidewalks for years, and it hasn't happened. So sidewalks are necessary in all of our communities.
Wendy Jacobs, County Commissioner, yes, we're actually already doing this. We're spending $700 million in our county transit plan, a lot, there's millions of dollars to build bus stops everywhere in Durham and half a mile sidewalk connections to our major transit villages that are being designated emphasis corridors. And if we want to do this out in the county, though, we need to study it because NC DOT controls the roads. And we need to set up a payment and loop program to collect money for sidewalks. So something that I would be willing to work on. Thank you.
Dr. Mike Lee, I absolutely support this. I live in North Durham and it is rare to see sidewalks. We're starting to see some, but we're starting, but it's very rare. If you look at Riverside High School or any of the schools around, many times there are not sidewalks. You see the kids walking on the side of the street and people driving, it's very dangerous. I support this 100%. Whatever we need to do as county commissioners to make this happen, I support it 100%.
All right, I'm seeing we're 115 and I'm looking at our leaders there. So let me just say, I got to know firsthand how, how important local government is and the county commissioners. And people don't appreciate that, but you have a direct impact on the lives of Durham citizens in a way that the more visible federal government and even state government are. So these are critically important offices. Again, we're so thankful that you all have said you offered yourself for service and would consider stepping up. And we're very grateful for that. On behalf of the coalition, please join me. And I see there's a question, but we've run out of time. There's other parts of the program, but I'll ask the folks to stay right afterwards and maybe you can then engage them. If that's all right, sir, I'm sorry. All right, thank you so much.
Web and all the candidates, thank you all so much for a very informative discussion. If we could just cover a few things real quickly.